All right. And welcome, everyone, to the 1,168th regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the planning commission will make a recommendation to city council, and the city council, after holding their own public hearing, makes the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The planning commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary flats and/or vacating petitions. The commission's recommendation is forwarded to city council for the final determination as to whether a petition is accepted or rejected. If a petitioner requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to city council. Resolutions that are adopted by the city planning commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The planning commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
This is Smiley.
President.
This is McQ.
Here.
Mr. Banjero.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Karen Magna is here, Chairman Will Shaw.
Is here. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Also with us tonight, we have Mark Toramina from our, our planning director, and we also have from our planning department, Stephanie Reese, and Scott Miller, and Jacob Uazy. And with that, we will call on them as appropriate to give background information on our petitions. For those in our audience tonight, I just want to let you know that what we're going to do is start with each agenda item. Our planning director will give background information on the petition. We'll then ask for the petitioner to use the raise hand feature to let us know that they're in the audience, and we'll introduce them and give them a chance to speak about their petition. If there's anyone else wishing to speak for or against a petition, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on these petitions as well. Once we've heard from everybody, then we'll make our decision on each of these items. So with that, we're going to go to the public hearing section of our agenda. Item number one, Mr. Secretary.
Petition 2021-03-02-07. This is submitted by Sheldon Center LLC. Requesting approval of all plans required by sections 1103(c) 1, 1103(c)(4), and 1103-n3 of the City of Livonia's ordinance number 543 as amended in connection with a proposal to expand the existing commercial shopping center, Sheldon Park Village, 33,00111 through 33,0251 Plymouth Road, including the construction and operation of a freestanding full-service restaurant with drive-through facilities, which is a Dairy Queen, and the construction of a freestanding building in preparation of operating a limited-service restaurant with drive-through facilities located on the southeast corner of Plymouth and Farmington Roads in the northwest quarter of section 34.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. We'll go to Mr. Toramina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This request involves the development of two commercial outlot buildings at Sheldon Park Village, which is located at the southeast corner of Plymouth and Farmington Roads. Both new outlots are for restaurants having drive-up window facilities, and as was mentioned, one is a Dairy Queen, and the other tenant has not yet been identified. Sheldon Park Village is just under 10, 11 acres in size, with 640 feet of frontage along the south side of Plymouth Road and 666 feet of frontage on the east side of Farmington Road. The zoning of the entire 10.94 acres is C2 general business. There are three buildings on the property. The main retail building is about 79,000 square feet. The main tenants in that building include Rite Aid, there's a Michigan Lottery, Dollar General, as well as Larry's Food Land and Chris Furniture. The complex also includes a smaller multi-tenant retail building that faces Farmington Road. This building is approximately 9,600 square feet. Both outlots were approved in 2016 as part of a project that involved renovations to the existing buildings, as well as the construction of a new Jimmy John's restaurant. The initial phase of the project has been completed, including development of the Jimmy John's. And what you're looking at here is the northeast corner of the property. This enlarged site plan shows just the corner of the main retail building, and then the area in front, where is my, all of the, this evening's review will focus on. The building here on the right is the Jimmy John's. The building here in the middle is the proposed Dairy Queen restaurant, and then the third building, the third outlaw building, if you will, is the, the other proposed restaurant. The Dairy Queen would be one story in height. It would contain a gross floor area of 2,660 square feet. Customer seating includes 48 interior seats, plus 18 exterior patio seats, for a total of 66. The outdoor seating patio is shown along the west side of the building and would be demarcated with a three-foot-high decorative fence. So just to get you familiar with this plan, this is the, the actual site plan of the two proposed buildings. As I indicated, the Dairy Queen, or excuse me, the Jimmy John's is just off the, the map here on the right-hand side. This building would be the Dairy Queen. This is the, the other restaurant. And this is, this shows the, not only the placement of the buildings, but also the, the configuration of the parking aisles, the drive aisles, and parking spaces around both of those buildings. In a C2 zoning district, the minimum required building setback is 60 feet. Both new buildings would be setback at least 60 feet from Farmington and Plymouth Roads. For the Dairy Queen, the drive-up window service would, would be on the east side of the building, the, the traffic lane serving the drive-up would commence here on the west side of the building. It would continue around the back of the building, a loop around to the pickup window located here on the east side. Drive-up operations are required to have adequate vehicle stacking spaces, lane width, as well as a bypass lane. The plan shows compliance with all three of these special requirements. And as you can see, too, all traffic on the west, the south, and the east sides of the building would be one-way moving in a counterclockwise direction. In terms of the exterior of the building, it would consist mostly of brick with metal panels. There is a small amount of EPIS proposed on the west side of the building, and that's in the form of the graphics, as you can see. These do constitute signage and would have to be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. The main entrance, the drive-up window, and the outdoor patio would all be highlighted by small canopies, and the overall height of the, the building is shown at 20 feet. And I'll just indicate that this plan is a, is a revision from the plan we looked at the study meeting last week. What it, what it shows, there was some, there was some change, changes to the placement of some of the features on a building. For example, this, this tower element, if you will, was originally shown on, on this side of the north elevation. This is a side facing Plymouth Road. The, the entrance is here. So, so what they did is they, the architect moved that feature right above the, the entrance. So, so it really demarcates the, the front entry to the, to the building. Also shown is the addition of a canopy over the door on the rear side of the building. We had asked that the petitioner consider improving the, the backside of this building to make it look more like four-sided architecture. I'm not sure if they accomplished that. I understand that they have to go back to Dairy Queen to make these requests. So what they're, what they're showing right now is very limited in terms of improvements. It's the addition of a, a canopy over the door. Also shown on this plan is where the actual roof line would be on the building. If you look carefully, you'll see this line running across the building, a few feet below the, the top edge of the parapet. That's intended to illustrate where the approximate roof line would be on the other side of the parapet to, to indicate how much space there would be for screening rooftop mechanical units. So for example, if a HVAC or other unit is placed on top, the question is, is, is this parapet tall enough to, to, to screen that? I think they're showing a couple of feet in this case, whether that's sufficient to fully screen the unit is questionable, but, but they are showing how that would, that would be accomplished. The other restaurant is situated about 112 feet to the west of the Dairy Queen. Its approximate seating would be 25. No outside seating is shown. This building is slightly smaller. It's about 2,130 square feet, and that's actually a slight increase over the plan that we looked at last week. Drive-up service would again be on the east side of the building with the drive-through commencing on the south side, in this case, where the, the menu order board is shown. Again, there'd be adequate stacking distance, lane width, as well as a, a bypass aisle provided. Terms of the design of, of the second building, it really is intended to match the exterior of the shopping center. So it's the same color brick, the use of these burnished blocks, and other, other features to make it appear consistent with the other buildings at Sheldon Park Village. The height is very similar to the Dairy Queen. It's just under 20 feet, about 19 feet four inches. No new curb cuts are proposed, either from Plymouth or Farmington Roads. Ingress and egress would be from the five existing driveways. I think we, we talked about these at the study session. And parking and circulation would, would really, for the new restaurants, would really be accomplished by extending the existing parking lot and, and drive aisles. In terms of parking with the addition of the two restaurants, the gross floor area of the shopping center altogether increases to about 95,173 square feet. That translates to a requirement of 508 total parking spaces. The site plan shows 516 spaces. So even though this is a slight reduction from the 2016 approved, approved site plan, which showed 539 spaces, it is still slightly more than what the zoning ordinance requires. Landscaping is included in the design to a, to a limited extent. Much of the landscaping has already been accomplished, especially along Plymouth and Farmington Roads. What's being added in the area of the two outlots is really minimal. Some foundation plantings, as well as some, some areas that we've asked to be added in the, in the expanded parking lot, and that, these are shown here. And I'll point out, too, that this site plan does show a, a new placement of the, of the dumpsters. I think one was previously shown in this general location. The other was directly behind the other restaurant. That's been moved now, so, so there's a combined two dumpsters located in this parking lot island with some landscaping around it. We don't have details on how that would be screened. That's something that would have to be done. We, we asked for the landscaping. They're showing it, but we don't have the plant materials that, that would go in there. In terms of the screening, the condition before you addresses some of the deficiency, deficiencies with respect to the plan on the dumpster screening. The council had asked that those walls, with, with the 2016 approval, that those screen walls be at least seven feet in height, and that the, the gates be of, of solid panel steel or durable solid fiberglass. So we've added those to the conditions. We have not reviewed this petition relative to signage, other than to indicate that only conforming signage would be allowed, and, and any additional signage beyond that would require the approval of the zoning board of appeals. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I can read out the correspondence.
Yes, please.
First letter is for our engineering division. It's dated March 30th, and it reads, "The proposed building locations are currently serviced by public water main and sanitary sewer, as well as private storm sewer. The submitted drawings do not indicate any modifications to the existing leads, and we do not believe there will be any further impacts to the existing systems. Should changes to the existing services be required, the owner shall submit revised plans to this office to determine if permits will be required. It should be noted that the developer may be required to obtain a permit from the Michigan Department of Transportation or Wayne County, should any work occur within the Plymouth Road or Farmington Road rights of ways. And a letter signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter of no objection coming from the Livonia Fire and Rescue, dated April 1st, and signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. A letter of no objection from the Division of Police Traffic Safety Bureau, dated April 8th, and signed by Scott Chapansky, Sergeant. A letter of no objection from the Department of Finance, dated March 31st, and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. Similar letter of no objection from our Office of the Treasurer, dated April 1st, and signed by Linda Sheal, Treasurer. And then lastly, we received today a letter from the Inspection Department that reads, "Pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been reviewed, and the following is noted. One, the parking spaces shall be 10 feet wide and 20 feet deep and double striped. And two, a variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required for excess signage. This department has no further objections to this petition." And that is the extent of the correspondence.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Toramina. Do we have any questions from any of the commissioners for Mr. Toramina? If not, Mark, one quick question for you. Did we ever find out from the petitioner, or was there anything addressed in terms of the, the circles that are indicated on the side of the Dairy Queen walls? Are those for signage, or what those sort of oval or circular shaped things are?
I did not follow up on, on that question. Possibly the petitioner has a response.
Okay. We'll see when we talk to our petitioner. If there's no other questions for Mr. Toramina, if the petitioner's in the audience, please click raise hand so we can recognize you. And we have Mr. Grenadier with us tonight. We give him a chance to unmute himself. There we go. Good evening, sir. We'll just ask that you start with your name and address for our record.
Good evening. Josh Grenadier, 7365 Parkstone, Bloomfield, Michigan, 48301.
Thank you, Mr. Grenadier. And is there anything else that you'd like to add from what you've heard from Mr. Toramina so far?
Well, as always, Mark covered it very thoroughly, very well. Thank you. We're super excited to complete the project that we started a few years ago. We think the restaurants will fit amazing in the site and fit in well with the overall corridor. The few changes we made, the front switch was just a confusion between the architect and the Dairy Queen when we flipped the, the front entrance, the red signage. And we did add canopies or awnings on the back of both buildings. We did raise the parapet on the back wall of the Dairy Queen, one foot. So we, we figure we have about three foot. We don't have the exact number yet, but the architect can finalize that in the next week or two, to find out exactly where those units are and whether or not they'll be able to be seen above that parapet wall. The landscaping around the dumpster will be the same as the rest of the site, roses, hydrangeas, grasses, all good-looking stuff. The ovals on the side of the Dairy Queen, I do believe are proposed signs, so that'll be, have to be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. And that was about it. Thank you, guys, for your consideration. Look forward to this project.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Grenadier, for that background information and update. Is there any questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner? Mr. Banjero.
Just a quick question. I, I like it, you know, no issue with that. Mr. Grenadier, about how many employees do you think you'll put in place here?
I am not certain that the operators, I, I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I, I gotta think that each one is gonna at least put 10-plus people to work. I'm not exactly sure, I shouldn't say, but I know that we'll put quite a few people to work constructing them.
Yeah. I was just wondering, because I know it's really tough to, to get people to work right now, so I didn't know if you were forecasting any staffing issues or not.
It's really outside of my realm, so I'd have to, I'd have to ask the operators to follow back up with you.
Yeah, I understand. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Banjero. Any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magna.
The question is, on the south elevation, I see the same type, I see hash marks on the back of the building. What, what does that indicate?
I am not certain. I, I believe that that is something beyond the wall in the form of a cooler. I think that the national prototype has an exposed cooler on the back of the building that's about eight feet tall, nine feet tall. And so that's what that dotted line, I think, is. And then we told them that that was unacceptable before you guys told us it wasn't acceptable, and we covered it in masonry brick all the way around, you know, up to the, whatever that is, 11, 12-foot mark.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm pretty certain that that's equipment behind it, the, the coolers.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magna. Any other questions for our petitioner? If there's no other questions from our petitioner, from any of the commissioners, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this petition? If so, you can click raise hand. We can recognize you. I don't see anyone else in the audience clicking the raise hand to speak on this item. Mr. Grenadier, is there anything else that you would like to add before we look for a motion to approve or deny?
No, just thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you coming and stand by. We'll get a motion on the floor here. If there's no other questions for our petitioner, I'll close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order. Mrs. Smiley.
Yes, I'll make an approving resolution that the request to expand the existing commercial shopping center, Sheldon Park Village, 33111 through 33251 Plymouth Road, including the construction and operation of a freestanding full-service restaurant with drive-through facilities, a Dairy Queen, and the construction of a second freestanding building for the purpose of operating a limited-service restaurant with drive-through facilities, is hereby approved, subject to city council approval and the following conditions. That the site plan identified as sheet number one dated January the 27th, 2021, as revised, prepared by Fennin Associates, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. That the landscaping along Plymouth and Farmington Roads shall be maintained to the satisfaction of the Plymouth Road Development Authority, the PRDA, and that the elevation plans for the Dairy Queen identified on sheet number A-3.1 dated March the 23rd of 2020, 21, prepared by Michael Bojio Associates, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to, except that the height of the parapet walls shall be increased, and the architectural features such as, but not limited to, shall be increased, spandrel glass, canopies, decorative lighting, cornice treatments, and masonry elements be added to the rear elevation to improve its appearance, subject to the approval of the planning department. That the elevations planned for the second building identified as sheet number A2C, prepared by two J2BA architects, as here, as received by the planning commission on March the 26th of 2021, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to, except that the architectural features such as, but not limited to, the spandrel glass, canopies, decorative lighting, cornice treatments, and the masonry elements be added to the rear elevation to improve its appearance, subject to the approval of the planning commission. That all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by either extending the height of the parapet walls on screening that shall be of compatible character material and color to other exterior materials on the building. That the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be a minimum of seven feet in height, constructed out of the same brick used in the construction of the buildings, or in the event of a poured wall, is substituted, the wall's design, texture, and color shall match that of the building, and the enclosure gate shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass, and maintained and, when not in use, closed at all times. That all light fixtures shall not exceed 20 feet in height and shielded so as to minimize the stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into the adjacent roadways. That only conforming wall signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. That no LED light ban or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the buildings and/or around the windows. That within two years from the date that the temporary certificate of occupancy is issued for the first of the two approved restaurants, the shopping center's rear parking lot, including all drive aisles and loading areas, shall be repaired, resealed, and restripped to the satisfaction of the inspection department. Parking spaces shall be double striped at 10 feet wide and 20 feet in length. That the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. Pursuant to section 19.10 of ordinance number 543, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only, from the date of the approval by the city council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Okay. Do we have support for that motion?
Support.
We have a motion to approve by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mrs. McQ. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Toramina.
If the maker of the motion would accept changes to the dates of the new data that was presented today, we have new dates, and I believe those dates are, are April 27th. So I think that would affect conditions number three and four related to the building elevation plans.
Absolutely. In fact, yes, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. And Mrs. McQ, you're okay with that, I'm sure.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions on this motion to approve? Comments? If not, if our secretary is ready, please call the roll on the motion to approve.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McQ.
Aye.
Mr. Banjero.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman Will Shaw.
Votes aye, and the motion passes. This will go on to city council with an approving recommendation, and we wish you luck, Mr. Grenadier, with your project.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Appreciate that, and you also have a good evening. With that, we are done with the public hearing section of our agenda, and now we move into the miscellaneous items. Mr. Secretary, I believe it's number two.
It is 2021-04-08-03, submitted by Shaw Construction, requesting approval of all plans required by section 18.58 of the City of Livonia's zoning ordinance number 543 as amended regarding a proposal to construct an addition to the existing building at 13980 Farmington Road, located on the east side of Farmington Road between Schoolcraft and Linden in the southwest quarter of section 22.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Toramina is next.
Mr. Will Shaw.
Mr. Ventura.
I have a business relationship with this petitioner, and so I will be leaving the meeting while this item is considered.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. We'll note that in our minutes, and now we'll go to Mr. Toramina for background.
Thank you. Again, this petition involves the expansion of an existing commercial building that's located on the east side of Farmington Road, just north of Schoolcraft Road. The building is owned and occupied by a contractor business called Shaw Construction and Management Company. This property measures about one-half acre in size. It has 100 feet of frontage on Farmington Road and a depth of 210 feet. The site has two zoning classifications. The south 60 feet is zone C2 general business, which is where the building is located, and then the north 40 feet of the property is zoned parking. The existing one-story building, as you can see on this aerial photograph, is located on the south portion of the property. That's the C2, C2 zone portion. The building is about 2,800 square feet in size, and as you can also see, parking is available mostly on the north and the west sides of the building, and to a limited extent on the, on the east side. The proposed addition would occur on the north side of the building. This addition measures roughly 933 square feet, so that would increase the overall square footage. So that would increase the overall square footage of the building to approximately 3,750 square feet. The main purpose is to provide additional general office space for the employees and other activities. The required front yard setback for a building in the C2 district is 60 feet. And although the existing building is non-conforming, having roughly a 37-foot setback from Farmington Road, the addition, as you can see, is setback further. In fact, it would be 63 feet from the right of way of Farmington. And then where the commercial zoning abuts the residential districts, the required rear and side yard setbacks are both 20 feet. In this case, the building is 44 feet from the abutting residential property to the north and roughly 94 feet from the abutting residential property to the east. So all setbacks are met as far as it relates to the proposed addition. The design of the building, currently the existing flat roof structure consists of brick, painted block, as well as metal siding. The addition would or has been designed to match the existing building. Except for the height, the addition would be about 14 feet in overall height, whereas the existing building measures roughly 17 feet. Parking is complied with on this plan. The ordinance would require 15 total spaces with the addition. The plan shows 15 spaces. Protective screen wall is required where the site borders residential. That is the case along the portions of the north and east sides of the property. The east side does contain a masonry screen wall. And then along the north side, there's a wall, really partially along the north property line. It stops roughly here, and there's a vinyl, six-foot-high vinyl fence that extends the remaining length of the property where it lies adjacent to that residential home to the north. No other site improvements are planned with this proposal. Signage has not been reviewed, but I don't think that's an issue. I believe as it exists today, all signage is conforming and no additional signage is proposed with this application. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I can read out correspondence.
Yes, please.
First letter is from our Engineering Division dated April 14th, and it reads, "The existing building is currently serviced by public water maintenance and sanitary sewer. The submitted drawings do not indicate revisions to the building services, so we do not believe there will be impacts to the existing systems. Also, storm attention is not addressed in the drawings, but the developer will need to meet the Wayne County Stormwater Ordinance requirements for new and previous areas. It should be noted that the developer will be required to obtain a Wayne County permit for any work occurring within Farmington Road." And that letter is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer. Next is a letter from the Livonia Fire and Rescue Division dated April 9th that reads, "We have no objections to this proposal. Note that if this addition will be connected to a structure with an existing fire sprinkler system, protection will be required in the new area as well. If no fire sprinkler is present, firewall separation will be required." And that letter is signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. Next is a letter of no objection from the Department of Finance dated April 8th and signed by Connie Campula, Chief Accountant. A letter of no objection from the Office of the Treasurer dated April 16th and signed by Linda Sheil, Treasurer of the City of Livonia. And lastly, a letter of no objection from the Inspection Department dated April 27th and signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Tormina. Do we have any questions from any of our commissioners for Mr. Tormina? If not, our petitioner is in the audience, Mr. Rapsen. Let me give him an opportunity to unmute himself. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
And well, lastly, you start with your name and address for our minutes.
Sure. Marty Rapsen, Shaw Construction, 13980 Farmington Road.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rapsen. And anything else that you would like to add to this petition that we haven't already discussed?
Mr. Tormina has accurately described our petition. We're strictly office-based to accommodate some growth we've had over the last few years and just better accommodations for our employees. That's it.
Okay, very good. And we'll see if there's any questions for you from any of our commissioners. Anyone on the commission wishing to ask questions of our petitioner? Or any questions of Mr. Tormina regarding the petition as well? I don't see any questions from any of the commissioners. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? If so, you can click raise hand. I don't see anyone raising their hand. Well, that was pretty simple at this point. Mr. Rapsen, anything else that you'd like to add before we make our decision?
No, we appreciate it. Moving forward, we're, our employees are excited. So if this moves along, we appreciate it very much.
Okay, very good. I appreciate you coming tonight. Let's go one more time to the commissioners, see if there's any questions. If not, then a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
I heard both Mr. Long and Mr. Bongiello. We'll go with Mr. Bongiello. I believe Mr. Long yielded to you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer an approving resolution that the request to construct an addition to the existing building at 13980 Farmington Road is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. Number one, the site plan identified as sheet one dated March 26, 2021, prepared by Green Tech Engineering, Inc., is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that this approval is subject to the petitioner being granted a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals for adding on to a non-conforming building and any conditions related thereto. Number three, that for the north property line, where the required protective wall does not currently extend the entire length of the property line, the petitioner shall have the option of either extending the protective wall the entire length of the property line, going to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a temporary wall variance, or have the missing section of wall permanently waived by the substitution of a green belt. Such substitutions shall be subject to approval by the Planning Commission and City Council. Number four, the exterior building elevation plan identified as sheet one dated January 7, 2021, prepared by Joseph Phillips, Architect LLC, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number five, any new light fixture shall not exceed a height of 20 feet from grade at the base of the light and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines or on adjacent roadways. Number six, the site shall meet either the City of Livonia or Wayne County Stormwater Management Ordinance, whichever applies, and shall secure any required permits, including soil erosion and sedimentation control permits. Number seven, that the three walls of the trash dumpster area shall be constructed out of building materials that shall complement that of the building. The enclosure gates shall be of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid panel fiberglass. The trash dumpster area shall be maintained and when not in use, closed at all times. Number eight, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number nine, the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time the building permits are applied for. And lastly, pursuant to section 19.10 of ordinance number 543, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from date of approval by City Council. And unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Thank you, Mr. Bongiello. Support from?
Support.
Mr. Long. And we have a motion to approve by Mr. Bongiello, supported by Mr. Long. Is there any discussion on this motion? Mr. Tormina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding condition number three and regarding the screening along the north property line, I have a question for the petitioner.
Sure, go ahead.
Mr. Rapsen, did Shaw Construction build that fence, or was that something that was done by the homeowner? Do you know?
No, we had a variance on that, Mark. Yeah, we just wouldn't put it up willy-nilly. So we did have a variance on that vinyl fence in front of the fence, yeah, our yard fence, so.
Okay.
That was approved.
Because, and I wasn't sure of the circumstances involving that. I was gonna offer another option, and that would be to have the homeowner sign an agreement allowing for the fence separation, which is something that we have available by ordinance. But realizing that a variance was granted for that fence, I don't think there's need to go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think, you know, that would continue to be valid even with the addition if the maker of the motion agrees. I don't see the need to go back to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Bongiello, how do you feel on that?
I'm totally fine with that.
Okay. And Mr. Long, you're okay with that?
Agree.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Tormina?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions on this petition before we go to a roll call? If not, Mr. Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to approve.
Mr. Bongiello.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mr. McQ.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye. Chairman will show.
Votes aye, and the motion passes. And this will go on to City Council with an approving recommendation, Mr. Rapsen. And again, we wish you luck on your expansion, and we're glad to hear that you are expanding and staying busy in our community.
Yes, yes. Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, and you have a good night now.
All right, you too.
Thank you.
I know.
All right, that takes care of item number two. We can note on the record that Mr. Ventura is going to rejoin us at this time and thank him for stepping down for that moment. And we now go on to item number three in our agenda.
And that is the approval of the minutes of the 1,167th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting held by the Planning Commission on April 13th, 2021.
They show all members were present with the exception of Mr. Ventura, so he just came at the wrong time to not be able to participate. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Make that motion.
Well, make that by Mr. Karen Magna, supported by?
Ford.
Mr. Bongiello. Is there any discussion on the minutes? If not, I think we can safely show six to approve that. If there's no objection from any of our commissioners. I see no objections, so we'll show six with Mr. Ventura abstaining. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission?
Yep.
I don't hear any other business, so with that, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
And supported by?
Support.
All right, motion to adjourn by Mr. Long, supported by Mrs. McQ. Again, if there's no objections, I think we can safely show seven on the motion to adjourn. And I see no objections. So that takes us to the end of our meeting. I do want to thank the community for listening in today and our visitors who attended the meeting for being here. Just a couple quick announcements for the community who may be watching this meeting. The State of the City address is coming up this Thursday afternoon, and you can watch that online. That'll be broadcast live. And you can go to the city's website to get more information on watching the State of the City address from our mayor. Also, we are opening up a public hearing or comments from the public. It's a public comment period for our proposed redraft of the zoning ordinance. And again, if you go to the city's website, to the main page, you'll see links and information as to what's being proposed. And you can submit comments to our planning staff for this revision to the zoning ordinances. So if you have any information or any comments or curiosity about that, feel free to go to the city's website at livonia.gov, and you can find out about both those events. So if there's nothing else to come before the commission, I'd like to again thank our community and Livonia Television staff for their contribution to our meeting. And with no further business, I will adjourn the meeting tonight at 7:46 PM and wish everybody a safe and good evening.
Night, everyone.